Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 8th, uh, Macon County Board of Commission meeting. Um, we had some much-needed rain early this week. Thank the Lord for that. We had all these wildfires and I think that's put a big damper on that, so, um, welcome. Mr. Cave, can you start us off with any announcements?
Yes, a couple of them. First thing, some folks will notice some activity going on around our streams. Um, there's some stream cleanups going on. We talked about in a couple of meetings ago, the US Army Corps of Engineers has actually contracted some agencies to do some debris removal from streams, some storm debris. So you'll see those folks working probably from the south side toward the north side, so you'll see a lot of them in the next, uh, I don't know, a couple of months or so. Um, and then I did get a notice from Miss Amy Owens at the county of Franklin. Uh, for the month of April, you'll notice that there are some blue lights over at the gazebo here at Thrall Street from us. Uh, and those blue lights are in observation of child abuse awareness.
Wonderful. Mr. Cregan, Mr. Antoine, Mr. Shields?
Just glad to be here and glad to see you all here. Be careful driving home.
All right. Mr. Scher, Mr. Laurie, Mr. Counsel. All right, well, I'd like to ask Mr. Shields to lead us in a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance.
All right, let's rise if you can. We're all in the silence, they're under their pledge. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ununder God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I think I stood up for none of you.
I just supposed to bring it back to me. You've got some jam going back there.
I heard you. All right, no public hearings? Um, any additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I have an addition for the consent agenda, um, which will be item H in the consent agenda. It's a fireworks permit for April 26th and 27th at the Old Edwards Inn in Highlands.
That's April 6th?
April 26th.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I actually have a deletion if you want to do that now. Um, item H, under old business, the Anthony Rappert Street intersection, we did not get all that information, so we need to remove item H.
Any more additions to the agenda? Uh, Mr. Scher? Thank you, sir. All right, public comment. Janet Walker.
Can I just go?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, sorry, I've never done this before. Um, my name is Janet Walker and I am the president for the Franklin Amateur Swim Team, also known as FAST. I am also the treasurer for the Mountain Swim League, which includes towns from Franklin, Highlands, Silva, Murphy, and Waynesville. Of those places, we are the only place that does not have a covered pool that we can use anytime at our disposal. So, um, I believe that getting a covered pool is beneficial. We pay, or Franklin High School pays the Franklin Fitness Center over $7,600 a year to use their facility. And if you were to ask those kids that swim for our Franklin High School team, they have, like, they get rashes, they have asthma issues. If I can bring you my son's jammers that he wears for swim team, a new pair, and then, like, three weeks later, what it looks like using the Franklin Fitness Center pool. We have a hundred and, like, roughly 150 swimmers that sign up every summer for our swim team. It is a really big deal. We help these kids, we teach them how to swim, we teach them how to be a part of the team. We're all big one, happy family. I mean, this is, like, really, really important. I know you guys aren't talking about the pool today, but it's just, it's a big deal. And I'm planning on getting a video together to get people that have been a part of the swim team before and are part of it now to show you what it meant to them. I mean, my kids have been swimming since they were in elementary school. My daughter's fixing to graduate Franklin High School and attend Piedmont University and swim for their swim team. Was it part of her goal? No. But it is now what she wants to do and be an education teacher and hopefully come back to Macon County and maybe even possibly take over coaching, um, along with some other kids that I know that want to do that. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Before you leave, um, I would like to encourage you to attend one of our Parks and Rec Committee meetings.
Okay.
And there we can kind of break this down a little further. We've had some really good conversations. Commissioner Sherrill and I serve with Mr. Adams right there. When's our next meeting?
It's Tuesday, second Tuesday of next month, at 8:30 in the morning.
Okay, I put him on the spot, but we can follow up with you, Ms. Walker.
Okay.
And I would strongly encourage you, we've had some really good conversations internally.
Is it in the afternoon? Like, in the evening, in the morning?
It is, 8:30 in the morning.
Do we have one in the summertime?
We have one every other month.
Okay. Can I wait till summertime?
Yeah. Yep, you can skip them.
What about, what about, where are you swimming now, over there at Health?
We swim, well, the summer swim team swims at the Rec Park Pool.
Okay.
And by the way, y'all's chemicals are made. So, y'all's chemicals are not eating up the swimsuits, so, um, or giving rashes or anything else, so, um...
Well, also, have you, are you aware of the master plan with the discussions of the Macon County Rec Park?
I've heard...
Because that is a topic.
I know it's a topic, and I know it's, like, it keeps getting pushed back and some things are more important, and I'm, I'm a big advocate.
I don't know.
I mean, not for swim, just swim. I mean, heck, I've had to volunteer for the girls' soccer team for the middle schools right now, so...
Well, since we've been talking about this, the swimming pool has never been pushed back. Phase 1A was the racket courts and the amphitheater was put in there, but, um, as far as the covering the swimming pool, that has never been pushed back or moved forward in this plan. So we're actually working on hopefully, um, getting some funds to help do this pool, but...
Yeah, and I know there are grants that have been available in the past, 'cause I've researched it to try to, like, what can I do, I mean, as an individual? And everything's like, oh, your county has to do it, your county has to do it, and so...
Well, I just want to let you know, um, I've had quite a few students come through that program, so I do understand, like, exactly how much that's beneficial. Plus, I do feel like covering that pool, we're gonna get a lot more use out of it than what probably everyone realizes. So I'm behind you 100%. I apologize for that, getting back to you.
Oh, no, you're fine.
I know you sent in a message, but...
So busy, so, but thank you. Thanks, guys, for your time. I appreciate you all.
Is diving, is diving still in Asheville? Do you have to go to Asheville?
Yes, we do. Um, the Jackson County Pool does have a diving well. Um, we go, I have a daughter that dives, or is trying to dive, and we go on Saturday mornings to Jackson County.
Jackson.
Um, but the high school team does go to Asheville two times a week after swim practice, and they usually don't get back till close to 10 o'clock at night, so...
So what's your two coaches' names?
Um, Dina Pecu and Duane Pecu.
Husband?
Husband and wife.
Husband and wife.
All right, let's do this along here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. All right, Mary Ann Ingram.
Good evening, I'm Mary Ann Ingram at 115 Autry Road in Franklin, North Carolina, and I love it here. I just want to say thank you, Mr. Cave, I've already said it personally to you, and thank you, Mr. Sherrill, for coming out to the Pine Grove School, and that we have movement in the school. We have a new heating and air conditioning system that was fabulous, we got to use it, and, um, everything's gonna be moving forward, so thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim Leister.
I can't see it. I'm Kim Leister.
Leister.
Um, I much prefer listening than speaking, and I've waited a couple of months before addressing this issue. I know y'all are tired about hearing about the library board. I'm tired of hearing about the library board. However, after the email that came to light two months ago publicly, and the issue still has not been addressed, that email came from an account by one of the library board, Macon County Library Board members, and it was not only unethical, it was possibly illegal when it was suggesting that things be dealt with behind the scenes to remove Macon County Library from FRL. It also went against the mandate that y'all have put forth by signing an agreement with FRL, and yet this person is still on the library board. And I'm just kind of surprised at that, that possibly it needs to be addressed. Thank you.
So, let me, real quick, let me address something with you. Um, you know, I got that email at the last meeting, whatever meeting that was that they brought that up. I didn't know about it, um, and I will say publicly, we are not involved in anything remotely close to what I read about on that email. So everyone could rest assured that everything's okay. I don't, and I get that everyone's worried about it, but I mean, we made a comment even from the last meeting that that's not the intention right now, you know, with this board.
Well, that's not what I'm addressing here.
What are you addressing?
I'm addressing the fact that someone on the library board put this forth. It was their email, and they suggested that, which goes against the library and the, um, what the library is standing for.
So...
And it's, and the library's mission statement by suggesting that the library remove itself from the FRL.
Well, if we're looking at the same email, that was addressed, that was actually signed by somebody else.
But do you real, and, and you're 100% sure that someone else wrote it? It's still that person...
As far as I know.
Well, it's still that person's email. And I don't know about you, but if I have a dog and you're walking my dog and it bites somebody, who's responsible? I'm just saying.
Josh, if, if I may just, um, I just want to...
I really, I really don't want this to be a...
Okay, so anyway, I'm...
I just want to say one thing. I've been perfectly clear about this library thing in the beginning. Stop promoting craziness, stop promoting stuff to our children, keep these books away from the kids, age-appropriate. But I will tell you that just recently I got this email, tampon machine in the men's bathroom in the Jackson County Library. I want somebody to please explain to me what purpose this right here serves in a men's and boys' bathroom. Feminine products, this is the craziness that I'm talking about.
What does that have...
Let me, let me start over here, I'm sorry.
Can I?
Do you need more time?
No, I do not. I am, I'm...
I want to make sure you get...
No, I said what I needed to say. Thank you, I don't know what that has to do with, but...
All right, all right, thank you for your time. All right, Betsy Based.
Hi, guys, Betsy Based.
Hi, Betsy.
Otto, technically Franklin. Um, so the minutes from the, you all will vote on these later, but it said, "Betsy Based expressed thanks to the board for being open to listening to the citizens." About pickleball courts, animal shelter staffing, and the three-minute public comment rule. So, yeah, I, I appreciate the opportunity to get up here. There is a huge difference between listening and hearing, and I feel like there's a big disconnect here, that there are people who come and are genuinely, they're so passionate about what's happening here in this county, as I believe you all started out to be, but I think some people got on their own agendas, and, you know, my comment is about the library, sorry, it is, because then the last, rest of this says, "She requested the board choose wisely for library board appointments and not take a cookie-cutter approach." And yet, we have a cookie-cutter approach on the board, and I'm really disappointed, and I hope you really think about this when you make appointments for the future, because I'm getting this sense that if I come up here and talk, you're gonna go the opposite. So is that an opportunity to silence me? Because I swear to God, every time I talk about something, it's almost always the opposite of what I'm asking for and what a lot of people are asking for. So whatever emails you all are getting behind the scenes, um, you know, I guess I'll keep emailing you guys and, and talk about things that way first before we have it in public, but I am much more comfortable with open and above-board in-public comments. So, May, um, sorry, I was gonna have this ready, on May 1st, which is a Thursday, at 1 o'clock, from 1 to 3, but you can just come for an hour, at the Carpenter Building, we have reserved room for a community group called Unity and Community. And this is a group that me and another person who are of wildly different belief systems put together to talk about things that are uncomfortable, because it seems like people with wildly different ideas can't have a conversation anymore. Our dear Mr. Shields came to the last one, and we really appreciated his willingness to listen and hear, and that was fabulous.
Thank you for the invite.
So thank you. You all are invited, I know you got invited, um, and I know you can only show up two at a time to someplace, but we meet every month, and we've been doing this since last spring, and we invite you to come, not as a commissioner, but as a citizen, to actually hear your citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. All right. That wraps up public comment. Any other adjustments to the agenda? Anybody hearing none, looking for a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, chairman.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Sherrill, second by Commissioner Shields. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your right arm and stating aye.
All right.
Aye. All right, five over, Ms. Tammy. Uh, no reports, presentations? All right, old business, update on Highland School Project. Project Coordinator Joe Allen and Caitlin Jones with Benoy.
Good evening, thank y'all for having me back. I'm very excited to talk about what's happened since last time I was in front of the board. Um, in terms of project schedule, we are on schedule. Since I was last here, we've officially gone vertical, which is a great milestone. Our footings are in, our slab is poured, our steel is getting erected, we have our CMU masonry installed through the second floor, and we've begun our rough-in installation of all the mechanical and electrical equipment in the addition to the middle school. Um, we've also been able to start the renovations for the existing middle school building. So we're wrapping up the re-roof of the existing building. We're also underway on the mechanical and electrical changes there, the new light fixtures, the new HVAC equipment, um, and also prepping for finishes, which are gonna be starting in the next two weeks. Um, on the exterior, we've begun the outdoor classroom, so, uh, we've got our helical piers in there and preparing for pouring the footings for that space. And then, um, the county has released us on the boiler line replacement, so we've begun that work of replacing those old boiler lines. Um, next time I'm here, um, hopefully we'll be talking about, um, the completion of all of our roofing, uh, the second floor renovations will be done at that point, and we'll have flopped floors, so we'll have to be working on the first floor renovations. We will also be in the existing high school building, working on the media center, the lab, and the pre-K spaces, so that all kicks off at the end of May. And the school's been great working with us, making sure they're moved out of these areas in time for us to begin that work. Um, we continue to work closely with your third-party monitor, who is WSP, as well as the design team, and then obviously your Macon County building officials have been working with us, um, helping problem solve and get through any issues that we've had, so it's been a real team effort on that front. And then lastly, we are tracking on budget, all of our allowances are tracking in, on budget or under budget, so everything's working really well.
Wonderful. Super.
You did a good job the other day at the Board of Education.
Oh, thank you.
Good meeting. Uh, I believe Principal Holbrooks is your principal, right?
Yes, sir, yes.
You want to see the real person over there, that's her husband. So, I said, got you in trouble, got you in trouble.
She's, she's, she's a massive, and her and her staff, I mean, obviously, construction is loud, and, and they've been so kind working with us, and, and we're, we're very grateful to have her on that school.
Yep. Mr. Chairman, I want to add one thing, and just to tell you how happy we are to have Benoy working for us. They did a, uh, presentation to the kids a couple of weeks ago where the kids actually got to come in and sign one of the steel beams and put their names on there. Uh, they have sealed that, and it's now up, so you, now you can actually go in there and see the, the beam, and that, that says a lot for them with their interaction with those kids and the staff up there, so we really appreciate that. Not only that, Mr. Project Manager, they have donuts as well.
We like donuts, donuts.
Sheriff wouldn't know, would he?
Not only are we lucky to have Benoy, I think we're lucky to have Caitlin, too. We got blessed by getting her as Project Manager, she's, yeah, she's on it.
Thank you.
So we're, we're lucky.
Well, we care about what we do, and, um, we are having a lunch, a barbecue lunch on the 23rd of May. If y'all would like to join us, it's to thank the teachers before they head off in the summer. Um, y'all are welcome to obviously come see the progress we've made and, and hang out with the team.
So, so we're on time and we're on budget?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Keep your fingers crossed for good weather, we've still got spring to get through, but yes, sir, we're tracking.
All right. Thank you, Cave.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Joe. All right. Update on Macon County Recreation Pickleball Courts. Curtis Durant and Seth Adams.
Thank you so much, glad to be able to be here to be able to discuss the pickleball courts, the racket complex at, um, Veteran Park here in Macon County. Last time we were here, we had presented a, a project that was ready to be, it was shovel-ready, ready to go in, but after further discussion, it was determined to provide a much better facility for, uh, for the community to be able to revisit a few things. Uh, so what you see here is a schematic design that we've worked with, um, county staff and, uh, working on some updates to provide the best facility that we'll be able to provide pickleball and, and not only pickleball, but a social gathering space. You can see here, one of the things that's, uh, benefit of pickleball is it's more than just a sport that people get to do, it's also a social gathering time. Uh, so some of the things that we've shown here and on this, uh, schematic design that we're looking to get your blessing and approval as we move forward, uh, is some of those gathering spaces with shade spaces, gathering spaces, uh, spaces to, to really foster that social gathering that comes with pickleball. It's a sport that I've participated in, and my family does on a regular basis, and in fact, I, I got a text message on the way up here from the group that I play with saying, "Hey, you're gonna be able to come and play pickleball with your son." Uh, and it truly is a social sport, and so looking at this opportunity to be able to expand the pickleball facilities and provide, uh, a social space, um, for the community is something that we've worked hard on and, uh, are excited to be able to move forward with the project and, and continue to push on this.
I don't want to beat you up too much, is this a concept or just a plan?
So this is a schematic plan, so it's a step above a concept, it's got real dimensions, everything working, and what we're doing is, once we get the blessing on this, then we'll be able to continue to move forward on construction documents to be able to prepare for bid.
I guess that's my, that's where I'm going, is elevations.
Mm-hmm.
Have you been to the site? Have you seen?
I have.
So I feel like the site drops probably eight feet from front to back or more.
Uh-huh.
Maybe six feet. So is this gonna be terraced, or do we do retaining walls, or...
So, as we've looked at the grades and we've looked at things, uh, you know, that's one thing that we have considered, is looking at those, they're, uh, from the point of the highest, uh, as we've looked, we've been able to determine that it should be feasible to be able to get this in. There may be, uh, some various steps in between some of them, but it should work.
Are we missing anything on the design that you see trendy, or...
No, so as we've really looked at these trends, uh, you can see here from some of the images, you know, having those gathering spaces, so there in the middle is an artificial turf zone.
I like that.
Uh, where, you know, you'll be able to have gathering spaces, be able to, people can bring in lawn chairs, pick, um, cornhole boards, uh, being able to provide that, and then, uh, having a variety of different shade opportunities for either, uh, some larger social events or in between the courts and other spaces, having some, some shaded spaces.
And does this thing come with lights?
So, the, the eight courts that you see on the plan right would be lit.
Which, which should be on plan?
Uh, I was, really where I was going, I see the rope lights in the picture, in the rendering, I think that's kind of cool over the artificial zone, but, but...
So that's something that we can explore. Uh, these are precedent images of, of places, um, that have successfully administered some of these things, and so that's something that we can consider through further discussion.
Personally, I love it, so I'll let somebody else speak. I think you've done a great job.
Thank you.
Restrooms, can you, uh, explain what these restrooms are gonna...
Yeah, so, uh, the restrooms, uh, will have, uh, four toilets for the women and four toilets for the men, uh, with a breezeway in the middle for maintenance facilities, things of that nature. It's smaller than the initial one that was initially proposed. Uh, however, that restroom was proposed to accommodate the tennis teams that would be utilizing that, which I know, uh, Mr. Adams is gonna talk about the tennis courts, and so we felt through discussion that there wasn't a need for locker rooms to accommodate the tennis teams no longer, but still having restrooms on-site. Uh, one of the things that is important to note is, uh, because this is... One of the things that is important to note is because this is still in the flood plain, the restroom will need to be floodproofed either, either through elevating the building or other floodproofing measures.
I think it looks great. A few little adjustments over the last few months, I think it's going to produce a nice facility for.
Thank you.
All right, well, any other, any other questions for anything that looks great?
Listen, I think this was a much, much needed improvement on the last one. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. And I appreciate those minutes of.
Mr. Chairman, let's, um, before we get too deep, I assume if you decide to approve this design tonight, uh, I'm assuming there will be some other design fees because we're on the second design.
Yes.
That were not included with the original contract. So we would probably need to, if you approve the design, they'll probably need to get back with us with an estimate on what those design costs. And I think the bid documents are already included in the cost.
Yes, they are.
But you may have a little bit of expense incur on the second design. We just need to.
Yep. And so.
Be mindful of, we'll have to deal with that next month.
Yeah. And, and that's something that we are working on. Once we get the approval for, for this schematic design is putting together proposal for additional services to basically go back a few steps and having to redo things. And we're preparing that proposal that we'll present to Seth Adams that can be presented.
And then once we do that, we'll have the bid documents and when we got the bid on it, we can come back with the price for y'all to.
Yes.
Are we at complete, at fault with that? I mean, we were presented a plan that we had, that we fell in love with. And then when it came back, it was like, no, this is completely different. And so in my mind, it's not all our fault with this design having to go into the second phase. If we would have had the initial design and produced that, we wouldn't be in this position. So I don't think that we are completely responsible for that.
Now, I think that's something that Eric and I can look at the contract and we can talk to these folks. If you approve the design tonight, we can dig a little deeper into that and see where we can, we can come out.
Well, and here's.
I certainly understand they had more work and stuff like that, but you know, through the process of, when you, when you come in with a, with a design that everybody in the world fell in love with and then it comes down to this point and then it's like, wait a minute, what happened? So anyways, but that's fine. I love this plan. I think it's. Thanks, Greg.
All right. So we're looking for a motion to pass this concept. Is that right?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this concept. So for racket complex at Veterans Memorial Park.
Second. Your motion by Commissioner Sherrill, second by Commissioner Breeden. Any further discussion? The only not playing devil's advocate here, the only real change that I think the county's made is moving the tennis courts back to where they're at. So I can see some design there, but really I don't think we're changing the design. I think we're just replacing the tennis court. So.
Just let the.
I, I understand.
Let the big whip scale with that.
And, and there may be, well, maybe some deducts because of the fact that tennis courts aren't included that will catch up on the tail end of that.
Yeah.
Good point. All right. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor, signify by raising your right arm and stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh Ms. Tammy. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, discussion and approval of bid package for Macon County Parks and Rec Tennis Courts. Seth Adams.
First and foremost, guys, I want to thank you for, uh, basically all you're doing for recreation. From passing the master plan in, in 2023, we're finally making, making strides, seeing it come to fruition. And I personally want to thank you guys because it is, it's needed. We're, we're seeing a lot of movement out there already. We had the concert coming up, May the third, or May the third. There's some changes in the park already and, and this will be the, the step, the next step. Obviously what's missing from that plan is tennis courts. In coming up with this plan, we decided the best avenue to go for the tennis courts is to redo them where they are. Tennis is, is especially the high school. Obviously that, the high school uses our courts as their game courts. And they're ecstatic that they are going to be left alone. They, they, they were okay because they were going to get new courts, but they're much happier now that they're going to be where they were. Uh, it's the best viewing platform, you know, down off that hill than, than there is. The problem is, since those are our high school tennis courts, is the timing of when we can, when we can redo the courts. We have to do them in the summer. Obviously you can't do asphalt in, in the middle of the winter and there's a girl's season and a boy's season. So it's in the fall and in spring. So we put together, once we had decided that that's what we're going to do, we released bids informally and to redo the six courts, basically brand new from the ground up and, and put new lighting on top of those poles. We're going to use the existing poles, but we are getting new LED lights on, on there also. The bids had a range of, for the high, for of 573, 114 to a low of 373,200. And I'm here tonight asking to, to be able to move forward with this so we can have them start as soon as they can in, in May. And that, that'll get us through by the time the, I think the boy's season, or the girl's season starts in, in August.
Any other discussion?
So this, uh, I'm assuming that's.
Yes, that's, it is.
Can you, somebody give us some information on that bottom number there that we would have to be the GC on that?
Yes. When we had our, our pre-bid meeting, a couple of the companies that were tennis court companies don't have their general contractor's license. They always say whenever they work for a county, the county accesses their GC. So I reached out to Mr. Allen and Lindsay and found out that, that we are allowed to do that. So that led us actually, enables us to go into contract with a true tennis court company to, to redo the courts.
Can we be a general contractor for 100,000 dollars?
As long as it's ours, we're using it for our purposes, we can be a general contractor for whatever number it.
Now, I feel like this is all coming at us tonight, but please remember, this, this has taken years, years and years, and it's all hitting tonight.
This is not something that we've literally just done together.
We step up to the plate and then we've had to back off the plate a couple of times. So I'm excited to finally be here and.
Yep.
Excited for you to ask us for a motion, so.
So this bid set was completely removal of the existing courts.
Yes.
And replacement of the existing.
Yes.
So there's no insits or buts about it? No hidden fees, no hidden costs?
No, it, it is, it is everything from the ground up. Four inches of stone. We have reached out to, to Kessel Engineering to do some core drilling. That, they asked about that just in case something was wrong with the, with the base down below. But this is from ground level up. If, if, when they took that off, we, we got into something that's below the surface that, that we're not aware of, that's the only cost. And I actually met with Signature Tennis out there three times. They've, they've made the trip up from Atlanta and they're not a little company. They did this all the time. They just did Georgia Tech's courts. I mean, they're, they're, seem to be on top of it.
And you're completely satisfied with this as a home run?
I'm, I'm very satisfied with this company.
Mr. Chairman, this is why I'd like to make a motion that we approve funding to Signature Tennis Courts Incorporated in the amount of 373,200 dollars to redo the existing tennis courts at Macon County.
Sir, I hear a motion by Commissioner Sherrill, second by Commissioner Antoine. Mr. Cave?
Can, I can ask one question. Would you consider, just due to the timeframe, that we're going to have to stay on as far as getting this done by August or September? I know we don't want to incur any extra costs, but, but if we were, would you, would you be open to amend in your motion to do a small contingency for that? And my recommendation, probably 10%, which would be 37,320, which would put us at, Lori, correct my math, 410,520 dollars. Because if we were to have any kind of a, an issue and we had to wait 30 days to come back to you all, it would put us way behind schedule.
Yes.
And we'll obviously do our due diligence for that.
Mr. Chairman, I would draw the first motion.
Yes, sir.
My next motion will be to go into contract with manager, Tennis Courts Incorporated in the amount of 373,200 dollars with a 10% contingency attached in case of any problem at the Macon County Parks and Rec.
Can I add one more thing? We, 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 we would need an associated budget amendment and that would be from contingent, or general fund, I'm sorry. And. And, and I'm almost done, Sean.
Okay.
And since we're actually going to be the general contractor contingent upon the project manager, which will be Jack Morgan and our planning permitting development director, Joe Allen, reviewing the contractual documents and making sure that we're satisfied with the, the stipulations within the contract.
That's my motion.
Hear a motion by Commissioner Sherrill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Antoine. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your right arm and stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Seth.
Thanks, Seth.
All right, update on Macon County Public Library. Joe Allen.
Evening, guys. I think there's some pictures that are passing around that may help a little bit about what we're talking about. So I'll start with the portage, which is the timber frame structure at the front of the library that had experienced some rot. It's 80% complete. We had some additional damaged material recover, uncovered at the entrance wall. And we had those materials tested by Wind River with their abatement contractor. And so the original design on this from our, our design team was to cut back into that stone patio, the stone foyer a little bit, which was going to be hard to make look like anything fixing it back. Old stone and new stone don't look the same. So they've come up with a new knife plate detail. So hopefully we're going to be able to slide those knife plates in from the outside and not disturb the stone foyer. That knife plate detail has been approved. They should start working on that this week. Unforeseen issues that we've had out there, portage wise, the posts, and I think Jack Morgan may have spoke about this at one point, those, that was 10 inches out level. It actually went 10 to inches down. When I come aboard, I actually thought, hey, maybe we should test the soil because it's hard for me to believe these posts have rotted 10 inches and this thing's still standing. Maybe the footers have sunk down. We tested soil, soil come back good. So we've got a good footer system. We built back up. Though some of those pictures you see, that's, that part's done with the rock actually back on it now. So where that porta-cachet ties into the entry wall at the main library building, there was also a picture there that you guys will see that those SIPs panels in between the beams have rotted. So we're going to have to remove those SIPs panels, reframe those walls and re-siding those areas. And we'll talk about that in just a minute, but. Sorry. Can you hear me now? All right, thank you. So on to the ceiling, the second part of the library, second phase of library repair is the ceiling and roof of the timber frame structure. Tomorrow morning, we're actually going to be taking the ridge cap off, weather permitting, and seeing what we can see. I will say that my gut feeling is we're going to see what we see in those pictures from the walls. And we're probably going to end up having to take some roof panels off to make those repairs. Just heads up, I think that's probably what we're going to see because it's pretty bad. That ceiling looks pretty bad up there, Barry, I think you saw it. It looks pretty bad up there. I'm thinking we're probably going to end up taking this same, same roof off to make the repairs. We'll know more tomorrow, obviously. Anticipated start for the interior work in the main fault is roof ceiling is in approximately three weeks. Anticipated completion of the interior work, the base bid only, is two months. There are some coordination things that we're working through with the library. They've got a summer reading series. And we got some, obviously, we weren't planning on tearing out the SIPs panels at the front wall, but we are now. So we're having to work through some of those issues with the library. And Abby's been very, very gracious about helping us and trying to help, help us figure out how to, to work through these issues. So we appreciate your help, Abby. So I guess circle back around to the entry wall there where you can see those pictures. So I'm not, there's, I've got, and I'll hand this out to you guys, you can pass it around, but I don't, I don't want to read every little detail here of what he's got to do. Because, I mean, we were, obviously there's going to be additional time for security fence. There's going to be some additional time for dumpsters to be on site now, some additional time for porta-johns to be on site now because we've got to reframe this wall and re-siding this wall. But basically, the, the highlights are, we've got to reframe the gable wall, remove all the rotten, rotten stucco, the SIPs panels and clean the frame and get ready to reframe and re-insulate. Those, if you guys have seen the pictures there, this, we're talking about in between the beams, all that's got to be removed and reframed. And what we're going to do is just reframe it with conventional top frame and spray it with spray foam. We're not going back with SIPs panels. And then there's also a picture there, if you look at it closely, of the left side of the entry door where, when the building was built, evidently the mason got a little bit out. And so we're, discussion we're all going to have to have with the architect is whether we try to remove that and just reframe it or try to spur out our framing to hide that two inches out level that we are. It was hidden behind the rocks for all these years. Obviously they hid it behind the rocks. Nobody ever knew it until we pulled the rocks off. So anyway, the additional time, the reframing, uh, the additional design for the knife plate timber frame, that cost, base cost is 27,125. We have to do that regardless. We got to reframe it. Now then, the siding options, we have two options for the siding. It's my opinion that if we want to stop this water problem, we have to go over top of these beams, these exposed beams, because that's where it's coming in at. So we either got a stucco option to stucco that whole front, which is 11,700 dollars, or the option two, which is the option I like, it's going to look a little bit better, board backing up to the kind of the gable end with cedar shakes in the gable, just to make it look a little bit nicer. That is 13,550. So 2,000 dollars. We can have something as long as this is a flat stucco wall. We do get a little bit of money back for the stucco repair. And there's some overhead fees there from Wind River and that's going to bring our total to 45,110 for the reframing and repair and re-siding of that entry wall to library.
Mr. Chairman, I'll add, if, if you're agreeable to that, we would need a motion amending, I'm sorry, doing a change order for Wind River in the amount of 43,610. And then some additional fees for Looper Architecture in the amount of 1,500 for the design fee and inspection process while they go through this for a grand total of 45,110 or 45,110. Lori, I believe it was associated budget amendment from our contingency fund to fund that. And we can move forward with this project at that point.
No insits or buts about it. It's a beautiful building and when you have a structure, you must take care of it and not ignore these issues. And getting off the topic just a little. And getting off the topic just a little bit for all the county employees and folks that's in a freestanding building, so purpose of their office, if you have to put buckets inside to collect water, please notify somebody that you've got a problem. And, I mean, when I first went into the library, there was water here coming through the ceiling, over here in the ceiling, and that's not, I mean, we must take care of these places. And the sooner you take and you address these issues, the less damage you're going to have over time. So that's just my, we got to take care of people's properties.
All right. Everybody? It's a pleasure of the board.
That would be option, those numbers are option one, numbers two.
Joe, the million dollar question, have you found where the water's coming from? I mean, are we still in discovery mode?
The siding, yes.
Coming through the siding?
What we're talking about here, yeah, it's leaking around the beams. It's getting behind the stucco and going in there, because it's not, it wasn't flash right around the beams, they stuccoed right up to the beams. If it wasn't flash, or when we get a blowing rain, it's just getting behind the stucco, and if it gets behind the stucco, it's stuck and it's going to start rotting.
Okay.
Now the roof, we're going to hopefully, if I have a answer for that tomorrow, and pull the ridge cap off. I mean, it's getting water in there, too. And I don't know if you guys have ever seen this from the inside, this entry wall that we're talking about, if you've ever seen that from the inside, you can see, there's water stains coming down that paneling, or this has been happening for a long time. Barry, you got to saw it, you saw it the other day, but it's just...
Now, on that peak of that ceiling, it's black, it looks like, from about this much, and it don't seem to...
Go down.
Go on down from that point on both sides, which, when I first looked at it, it almost looked like that it was completely the ridge cap issue.
We may very well have a ventilation issue there, more than a water issue. We'll just have to...
What was the second option that you had there?
The second option was the board and batten with the cedar shakes and the gable.
Yes.
Yeah. That would be a hardy top board and batten, but still...
That'd look much better with all those posts and beams and everything out there, so...
That $45,110 would be the budget amendment, if you're right here taking into consideration the detail.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the change order for Wind River construction for $43,610 and Looper for $1,500, total budget amendment of $45,110.
Second that one.
From general fund contenders.
I'll second that.
Here a motion by Commissioner Breeden. Second by Commissioner Sherrill. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right arm and state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh, Timmy. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Joe.
Does he have somebody he wanted to introduce?
During this moment of silence, I'd like to introduce our new media person, Shelby. How you doing? Can you stand up a little bit? He's big fellow. Work for Franklin Press, you have to have a beard, and you have to be big. We appreciate you being here, and hope you have a enjoyable time with us.
Of course.
And what is Shelby, what was his last name?
Shelby Powell. Powell with a P.
P-O-W-E-L-L?
That's it.
All right.
Nice to meet you, Shelby.
Nice to meet you, Shelby.
All right. Moving right along, discussion regarding Macon County Animal Services. Mr. Manager Cabe.
Mr. Chairman, last month, you all were given a copy of the Macon County Animal Services System summary that we had put together, and in that summary, there were a couple of options on things for you to consider moving forward as far as looking at animal services. One of those options was option three, which was option where we would advertise and see if an outside agency could possibly manage that shelter. So tonight, as part of, particularly as part of the budget process as we move forward, I basically just wanted to ask the board if you wanted me to proceed with issuing a request for proposals to outside agencies, nonprofits, or other local groups, to see if anybody is even interested in that option, and to bring those back to you for your consideration to see if you were even interested in that.
I love it.
I'd like to make that into a motion.
Here a motion by Commissioner Shields.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Breeden. Sorry, go ahead. All right, five oh, Timmy. Not easy. Update on Cowie School. Mr. Warren Cabe.
So there've been a couple meetings between Commissioner Sherrill and Mr. Breeden and myself with Cowie School. Their lease expires on the 19th of this month, so we need to reconsider a new lease for them. In your packet, you do have a proposed lease, it is a one-year lease. There's been a lot of discussion back and forth about the term of that lease, to make sure it's good with them, and of course, tonight, the only thing we can consider tonight is a one-year lease because of the advertising requirements for it, but we've been pleased with the stuff we've seen from those folks, we've met with them several times, and we would like to move ahead with, we're going ahead renewing a lease, probably for a one-year term with those folks tonight.
So in that, there's no way to extend a few months? No?
If you go anywhere past one year, you get into that advertising situation, and if you have a one-year lease, but you put an automatic renewal clause in it, for instance, four terms, then by statute, that's considered a four-year lease. So basically, we would have to stop it at April 19th or 20th of 2026. Now, you can also, if you decide you want to go a longer term, you can do one year tonight, and then we can obviously come back and we can readdress that and advertise and extend the term if you want to do that.
Don't need complicating the matter, any...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the lease as presented for one year with the Cowie School Arts and Heritage Center.
Second.
Here a motion by Commissioner Breeden. Second by Commissioner Antoine. Just for public record, if you haven't been to Cowie School, and it's worth the trip out there, it's pretty incredible, and this little group right over here is representing Cowie School, and we thank you for your time and what you're doing out there, so it's a wonderful thing, it really is.
The only other thing I'd like to say is enter the, you know, one-year lease, because that's what we're at right now, but I would like to see for their, really for your benefit, that's a pretty magnificent thing you do out there, so I would like to see at some point I start to talk about a longer term, you know, just for your peace of mind, you've got folks in there that are doing business and trying to run little businesses out of there, and I think that would help them as well and help you to attract some folks, so I think we're going to obviously do this one, and then maybe we should look at trying to go longer term if we're going to do that.
Anybody else?
No, I'm just hoping in that, at the end of this one-year lease, that they come in and say, we're ready to take this baby over, and we turn it over to you.
All right. For the record, motion by Commissioner Breeden. Second by Commissioner Antoine. All in favor, please signify by raising your right arm and stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, five oh, Timmy. This is way too easy today. All right, update and discussion regarding the upset bid process for the 651 East Main Street. Mr. Councilman.
Okay, so last month, the board approved soliciting bids on the, we're going into the upset bid process on the offer of $175,000, there were no upset bids made after that, and so it is back before the board to either accept or deny the sale of the old Gulf Station, old Gulf gas station for $175,000.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I made some phone calls after this went into contract, even up to the date that this upset bid process expired, and there was no action by folks that showed that they were interested in this property, so tonight, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this $175,000 for the property located in 651 East Main Street.
Second.
All right, here a motion by Commissioner Sherrill. Second by Commissioner Breeden. I feel like it's been advertised, and I'd like to see a business in there, and downtown Franklin's a wonderful location, I'm excited myself.
It is a huge liability to this county, I mean, it needs a lot of work, and, you know, we were questioned about this property being used for a county office, and for the amount of money that it would cost this county to fix that up and even put the smallest organization in this county government, it makes no sense whatsoever. So, and just like the chairman said, put a business in there and let them run with it, and produce some sales tax money for us.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right arm and state aye for the record.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, five oh. Feel like I need to smack the gavel and say sold.
Yes, please!
All right, new business, approval of proclamation declaring April 25 as National County Government Month. That's me. Mr. Cabe, can you help me out right here?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners has been promoting April as National County Government Month, and they have actually asked that we pass the resolution. Would you like me to read the whole thing, or just... Okay. Whereas the nation's 3,069 counties serving more than 330 million Americans provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities, and whereas counties fulfill a vast range of responsibilities and deliver services that touch nearly every aspect of our residents' lives, and whereas counties, as intergovernmental partners, enact local, state, and federal programs to address the needs of all residents, and whereas Macon County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, well-being, and safety of our residents in efficient and cost-effective ways, and whereas each year since 1991, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services, and whereas Macon County provides many valuable services to the citizens and visitors of the area efficiently and effectively with the lowest tax rate in North Carolina, now therefore be it resolved that I, Josh Young, Chairman of the Macon County Board of Commissioners, be hereby proclaim April 2025 as National County Government Month, and encourage all county officials, employees, schools, and residents to participate in county government celebration activities adopted this 8th day of April 2025.
Thank you, Warren.
All right, Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we approve and support this proclamation declaring the month of April as National County Government Month.
Thank you. Here a motion by Commissioner Antoine. Second by Commissioner Shields. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right arm and state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Warren. Five oh, Timmy. All right.
Thank you.
Excuse me. A discussion and approval of a part of grant, Parks and Rec Director Seth Adams.
I'm back. Part of grant, Parks and Recreation Trust Fund. It is a state-supported grant for recreational improvements through either facilities or purchase of land. We have been lucky enough to receive four of these over the years, two for, one for Wesley's Playground, one for the Greenway Improvements, one at Buck Creek Park, and then one for Parker Meadows. In this overall master plan, there's a lot of things in there. So we, as the rec commission, decided we need some funds, you know, to help, to help do all these things. I mean, it comes, nothing's cheap anymore. So we had discussion at the last rec commission and came up with four plans to kind of equal the amount of money that a part of grant is, that you get. It is a dollar-for-dollar match up to $500,000. So in talking with the rec commission, we decided the walking bridge that will connect the parking lot at the biddy field to the new pickleball facility with a price tag of $300,000, the amphitheater with a price tag of $350,000, multi-use covered court on the basketball court, that basketball court gets bigger, actually, two courts and it'll be covered, for a price tag of $450,000, and the bathroom facility that we took from the multi-court, when tennis court and pickleball was going to be together, was a bigger bathroom with locker rooms for the tennis courts. That's included in this also at a price tag of $300,000. Obviously, all that added together is more than a million, it's actually 1.4, but we felt that to come up with a good, a good plan, a good grant application, it needs to affect various things. And so that's why I'm here tonight, is asking for us not to only match the $500,000, but actually, our match would be $900,000 to the 1.4. Part of give us $500,000, which we've got three years to spend, and we don't have to do this right away, it can be done over three years. They, the southwestern commission is helping me write the grant as we speak, we're kind of in a time crunch, but one of the things that the grant requires is obviously you guys' support, and then y'all actually going on record saying that you will match the funds if we receive them. The due date is May the 1st, so we will turn it in in a month, and they will award the end of August. So we'll know sometime this fall whether or not we got the grant. Right now, the town of Franklin has an open part of grant, they got a part of grant last year to do a playground on their property in town, but we felt that the walking bridge, the amphitheater, the multi-covered court, and the bathroom facility is kind of the next phase of the master plan.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Sir.
All right, anybody got any questions for Parks and Rec? I think this all kind of ties in with, you know, a new identity to that park.
It does.
And, you know, just a new tone, so I think it's pretty exciting.
All right. Motion to...
I think a motion would be appropriate. So making a motion to accept for the, is that $900,000 match?
Tonight, all I think you need to do is approve the application of the grant, then if we're awarded that, then you'll approve accepting it, so tonight, all you need to do is approve the application.
So basically, tonight, we're going to approve you applying...
Yes.
With this board saying if we get it, we are going to match the...
Yes. Yeah, we don't owe anything at this point until they award us the grant.
Cool. I'd like...
This is good.
I'd like to make a motion to support Seth here in going forward with Macon County doing that application.
All right, here a motion by Commissioner Antoine.
I'll second that motion, Chairman.
Second by Commissioner Sherrill. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your right arm and stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh, Timmy.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Cabe, discussion regarding community funding pool.
So, Mr. Chairman, and during the budget process last year, you all appropriated $75,000 into the line item for the community funding pool. Typically, those folks, you have a community funding pool committee that meets usually around this time of year, they advertise for applications for that funding, then they take those applications, make decisions, or make recommendations to you all, usually in May or June, on how to distribute those funds to different nonprofit agencies. One of the things we discovered is, we got into this process, they have a three-year term somewhere in the neighborhood, while all of those folks had actually expired, so tonight, one of the things I'd like your consideration of is to go ahead and authorize me to advertise those positions. They will apply just like they would for any other board that you have, and then you'll approve them probably at the May meeting, and then at that point, if you agree to go forward with this, then they can begin the process on taking those applications, make a recommendation... process on taking those applications, make a recommendation back to you, and deciding how to... you all decide how to distribute those funds. Now, obviously, we're in a time crunch, so we may or may not get that done by July 1st. But Lori and I will work through the process on if we don't have those folks in place, how to deal with that as far as the end of the budget year, rolling it into next budget year, or how we deal with that. I will say, one of the other things that we have discovered, there was a resolution... this committee's been around from 2017 prior, but in the early 2021, I believe, there was a resolution that was drafted clarifying the existence of that committee, making it clear what they were supposed to do. The membership, basically at that time in 2021, says that those folks are... you pick those folks, and without a whole lot of restrictions or requirements on those folks. We did find some minutes dating back to 2017 where there were positions that were agency-specific. There were, I believe, eight nonprofit agencies: Reed to Me, March Dimes, Rotary Club, Macon Program for Progress, a whole bunch of those folks. The agencies had positions, and then you had five community folks on there. Well, some of those agencies either don't have a presence in Macon County anymore, and it's not really clear with the current resolution what those are supposed to be. So, my recommendation tonight would be, if you want to proceed with establishing or re-establishing the members on that committee, authorize me to go out and put that on our webpage, advertise for positions. We will have folks that apply. They can tell us, "I'm with Macon Program for Progress. I'm just a community member. I'm with March Dimes." I'm with whatever agency they want to put down. When we do your summary sheet and your list of those folks when it comes back to you, it will have all those folks on there, show those agencies. We'll see who's interested and who's not, and then you can make your decision on what you want to do with that. So, basically tonight, I'm just asking for your approval if you want to go through with that to advertise for those folks. Now, I will say, those folks work at your discretion. Those are your funds. You don't have to have that committee to distribute those funds. You could do that yourselves as a board if you wanted folks to come to you and bring your applications, or you could decide not to fund it, obviously. You could decide not to use those funds in that purpose. But I will say, I think the reason this committee was established was so that... to keep those folks from coming every month and you having to make those decisions on a piecemeal basis. So, basically tonight, I'm just asking for some direction on what you want to do with that, and then if you point me in the right direction, I'll get a game plan together on how to work that out for you by the next meeting.
Is that going to be a motion or just a...
I would prefer a motion, yes, sir.
So, either you advertise for the position
Yes.
or this Board of Commissioners handles the $75,000 that was in the budget for
That's correct.
25.
That's correct.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and establish the community funding pool and under your guidance, Mr. Cade.
Second.
Good with that?
I will, yes. My direction will be to advertise for those folks, bring them back to you for your approval. Yes.
So, have a motion by Commissioner Shields, second by Commissioner Antoine. Further discussion?
Well...
Is this for one? Are we just doing this for the 25? Or is this going to be an establishment?
I think that will be up to you because the funding is there this time.
Right.
But of course, the funding will be up for discussion for the next fiscal year when I bring your proposed budget back. So, obviously, if there's no funding, then you don't need the committee. So, I think that'll actually be up to you when we get into the budget process.
So, the only real discussion that I have about this funding pool is, in my opinion, it's not the role of the government to tax its citizens and then decide who they're going to give it to. And as it was discussed tonight, we just spent $45,000 on the library. We just spent $22,000 on the clock tower. Those funds should be used for the people's property. And I'm not saying anything about these agencies and these nonprofits and the work that they do. But as a nonprofit and for the government, and like I said, to tax its citizens and then decide that they're going to give that money away, I don't think that's the role of the government. And as a nonprofit, we need to get back into the of going out and raising funds, doing fundraisers and looking for donations. So, I think these $75,000, these $75,000 funds were budgeted for this year already. So, I think that we move forward with that. But where I stand on it is, the town of Franklin did away with the community funding pool. Town of Highlands did away with the community funding pool. Why is the county still doing it? The taxpayers of this county, we need to save our people as much money as we can. And if you want to give a nonprofit a $100 bill, then by all means, that's your choice. But I don't think it's right for the Board of Commissioners to continue to do that, so...
I guess I could say the opposite of what he's saying. Work with nonprofits. They are... I'm trying not to say the name of the nonprofit. If we don't give some of the nonprofits some monies, they are doing work out here that would cost this county monies, but they're paying for it through grants. And I guess I'm going to just say Kids Place. I worked with Kids Place, what they do in providing a lot of different things for in-harm wave type situations, and they do a lot by grants. The $10,000 that we've received through the county, we say thank you. But if you don't take that... if you put us in a situation where we have to come here and ask for money, we'll ask for more, then we have four counselors at Kids Place at this time. It's about $60,000 a person in a year. So, $240,000 right there that we pay for through grants, community care centers and those type of things. If... it's a necessary... I'm going to say a necessary evil that we have that organization within our county because of what they do. But it's all by grants, CAC, and those type of things. And if you had to pick that up because it would be a need, you would be a... you're looking at a quarter of a million dollars that you'd have to bring into that fold there. And there's other organizations in the same situation. I'm just having to be more familiar with Kids Place. And that's also... Mr. Cooper, he was the county commissioner at one time. And when you open up this door, ask to let people come in, you'll have people wanting certain things for their Little League All-Star team, going for a travel someplace. You'll have abundance of people come to you with a need. So, this funding pool allows... they take that away from you. You don't have to get personally involved in it, which is a good thing. But I would like to say, this funding pool was $75,000. And if you look at Kids Place, I think last year, we received $10,000. But we have a large organization that's pertaining to children, and it's been molested. A lot of things happened to them. And so, I'd hate to see that organization not be funded. And because somewhere along the line, and the Health Department would pick you... would tell you the same thing, too. They'd have to pick that up some way, and it would cost the county quite a bit of money. And so, that's the other side of the story that you... I understand where John's coming from, but the other side of the story, there's a necessity for nonprofits out here, and they're working every day, and they're working hard. And it's something that's a necessary evil that you have, and it's sad that we need it.
I guess my only input in this would be, I mean, as a taxpayer, I don't mind if my taxpaying dollars go to things that are helpful to the community. So, it's one of those things where it's really... it's not so much that government, to me, it's really the people. It's the people's money. And if the majority of the people are okay with that, then I think that's the direction that we're going.
Since we're all talking. My position on that's like a 50-50. You know, I kind of understand, you know, what John's saying about the taxpayers paying for nonprofits. And in my opinion, there's departments that need to be funded that we're not funding fully or we're not funding properly, but we're funding nonprofits that, you know... and our job, I think, is to provide county departments with the money. On the other hand, it's, you know, it's important. There's some nonprofits out there that are very important, and they need some funding. So, it's kind of a 50-50 issue for me. I would like for us to obviously go ahead and do this year since it's in the budget. And then if we move forward with it, I would like for the board to have a little bit more oversight because I've heard that there in past years, we've underfunded or overfunded or whatever it would be. So, I would at least like for us to get eyes on that and know exactly what we're funding and how much we're funding and, you know, what they need. But I'm good with moving forward this year and getting it funded.
I want to say something here. I went to see Barry this morning, and we have a Kids Place meeting Friday morning at 7 o'clock. And so, I've invited him to come to that meeting in Mr. Davis's old house, the Dr. Davis's house, and for him to get a feel of what we're talking about here and the necessary things that we do in working with young people and families. And so, and he said yes, and I appreciate him being willing to come in and let's look at this, see what's... see what's going to educate yourself. And the only reason I didn't invite John, it'd make three of us, so he'll get his time.
And I think it's important, Mr. Shields, I didn't say anything about these nonprofits not being important in the community. The biggest thing is, and it's like being a successful businessperson. If you're a successful businessperson, you don't need your hands stuck out for people to give you the money to survive. And so, if you have a nonprofit that is doing absolutely fantastic works, then your community, your churches, and everybody else is going to support that. But our role as county government, in my opinion, is to tax the citizens and the taxpayers of this county for what is truly needed to run a successful government. And when you're giving the taxpayers' monies away with a committee, I just don't see that that's... I mean, I would rather go out here myself and help these people raise funds instead of taking on and giving the taxpayers' monies away. Look, I volunteered 22 and a half years on Highlands Fire Department. I know what volunteerism. I ran Little League in Highlands for 20 years. I coached high school baseball, all volunteer stuff. I know what it is to volunteer, and that's what I continue to do. So, and through that process, if you set a dollar amount, that's what you're going to get. If you don't set the dollar amount and you're asking for donations to help this nonprofit survive, then the community comes together to help you. So, I mean, that's just... I think our monies are better spent taking care of county business and the assets that belongs to the people of Macon County.
Let me...
Let me ask. I see Mr. Garrett there. She's with this arena, and she's moving. She's wanting to...
Oh, absolutely. Well, I just...
I'm proud of her song.
Mr. Garrett, she understands what we're working with here.
Just one bit of insight that hasn't been mentioned. Many times, these nonprofits use the county grant, community funding pool, as to show the county's buy-in for certain projects
Yes.
and to be able to leverage other grant funds. And so, you're really leveraging your investment in those nonprofits to bring more money into the county many, many times. So, I want you to keep that in mind, too. I mean, whether you limit it or have a structure doing it, those funds are important for nonprofits to be able to leverage other money coming in.
Is there any way you could provide us some of those? I think that would really be...
Some examples? Yeah, I can reach out and make sure that...
That could be wonderful.
Those... I know I've seen it with the community care clinic, you know, just being able to leverage those and to show buy-in from the county that those... the investment is worth it. The investment in this community is worth it.
Sort of just like the Part of Grant we just brought up.
Right, right.
We're going to commit $500,000 if we get that.
So, whatever limit you put onto that or process you put onto that, it's just very important that you continue to do it.
So, what is... what's the process of figuring out which nonprofits in the county that this goes to?
From what I understand, it's that group of individuals...
So, that committee selects?
That committee makes the selections, and they do have a set of bylaws. The bylaws doesn't specifically have criteria in it on what they're looking for. So, I think they have to take the general outlook on what they think needs to be funded, make the recommendation, bring it to you, and then you ultimately have the final say-so on those funds. We can certainly, depending on how you want to move forward, if you want to look at those bylaws, you want to look at that resolution, we can certainly tighten that up or adjust that as needed later on in the process if you want to make that part of this.
Because, I mean, I'm just wondering, like, how... what's the process? Like, how, you know, out of all these... there's a lot of amazing nonprofits here, but how are they making the decision which ones go on this to be able to get funded?
I'll be happy to give you that information, and then if we want to make changes to that, we can... if you want to proceed forward to this later on, we can certainly do that.
Awesome. Thank you.
Ms. McGarrett is correct 100%. The first thing I ask you on those grants, what does your county... how do they participate in this? And when we...
Many times, a letter of support just isn't enough. They want to see actual investment.
Well, and it'll be interesting to see what you produce to us, which nonprofits out there depend on county tax dollars moving forward for those grants.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
All right, so I want to move forward a little bit here.
Okay.
It sounds like we have a consensus on the funds that have already been pledged this year. I guess, Manager Cade, how many members do we appoint?
There are actually 13 members on that committee.
Wow, okay. I just... I lightly worry about advertising that, having 185 applicants. You know what I mean? And then it's... I feel like we need to somehow make sure we're diversified and have all walks of life in that.
There are... you got a criteria you go by.
Okay.
And it may be in your plans now, I don't know. But there's a criteria you go by, and you stay away from politics, excuse me, Mike, those type of things. You just about have to be a neutral person in that, in our rhyme reason for how you choose those people.
Mr. Chairman, you do have a motion and a second on the floor. We got into discussion. So, if you want to move forward to that, I will compile a list and try and categorize those for you, make that easier for you next month.
All right. All right, here I have a motion. I believe it was by Commissioner Shields.
Shields, and seconded by Commissioner Antoine.
Seconded by Commissioner Antoine. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right arm and state "aye" for the record. Opposed? Tammy, four of one for the record. Thank you. All right. Discussion and approval of reappointment, County Attorney Eric Ridenhour. Mr. Cade?
So, Mr. Chairman, our attorney was originally appointed in March of 2021. The original... The original agreement, supposed to be for a four-year agreement, which puts it up into 2025. And then it was actually amended, uh, a couple of years ago to make some fairly minor changes to the agreement. But we felt like that, first of all, you all actually did a, uh, a review, an evaluation of both he and I back in January. Uh, and based on the fact that the, it's been four years since you all have either reaffirmed or or went back to, uh, deal with our attorney as far as his agreement with you, we felt like it was pertinent that you reconsider that at this time. The agreement that has been proposed to you, uh, is basically the same agreement as before. Uh, it does, the hourly rate is the same. Uh, the maximum amount there is within our fiscal, uh, budget at the moment, so there would be no budget amendment required or anything required for the funding. Uh, and he does work at the pleasure of the board. So as far as a, uh, a termination or release, then that that can occur at any time that you all, just like me, that that you decide that you need to search or go in other directions. So basically, I would like to, uh, put that agreement in front of you and open it up for discussion and see which direction you want to go with that. And obviously, Eric may want to add something to that. I did take great pride in being the one that reviewed his contract.
I did have one point of clarification given out under B. It says that the county agrees to reimburse attorney's law firm out of pockets. And it says publication costs, deposition costs, travel court costs, filing fees, extra fees. For the travel, I was just going to point out that I, there is no, I've never charged and don't charge to appear in Macon County or Macon County courthouse. That is only, uh, so we have a case to go to the court of appeals and I need to go to the court of appeals and be reimbursed for that travel, but, um, I worked for you all, I need to be here, so, um, I'm obviously charged to be.
And that's why we like you.
I am charged to be here, not to get here.
I retract that statement.
Is that, um, renewing for four years? Is that, um, what is?
Um, it does say for a period of four years, but essentially, and I will ask our attorney who's up for consideration, he works at your pleasure. So even though it does say four years, at any given time, you can come in and say it's no longer necessary. The four years gives us a good target to at least come back and look at it. You know, we're we're going to do, I'm assuming we're going to do evaluations every January or December, January, it's like we did before. So that's obviously a good time for you to to meet with him, just like you do me, discuss any kind of issues, work those out. But but essentially, no matter what, you you essentially work, he works at the pleasure of the board.
So you're looking for a motion?
A motion to approve the revised agreement, uh, dated April 2025 that's in your packet.
Reappointment?
Reap, uh, yes, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make that motion that we, uh, uh, keep Mr. Ridenhour on our, uh, staff here. We need him.
Motion by Commissioner Sherrill, seconded by Commissioner Shields. I would just like to say that I appreciate your candor and, uh, you're always, always very straightforward. And people don't think really realize that you you represent all the 22 or 24 departments of the county, the sheriff's department. And, uh, thank you. I think you do a great job.
Thank you.
So. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your right arm and stating aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Let the record be laid, five oh, Ms. Tammy. Thank you. All right. Consideration and approval of resolution to exempting architectural services for the solid waste recovery building. Uh, Mr. Warren, K?
If y'all remember, there was a fire that occurred at the landfill a couple of years ago that affected the recovery building. I keep calling it the Baylor Building, but it's actually the recovery building where the Baylor used to be. Uh, we have received an insurance settlement on that, uh, building and we're due for some accumulated depreciation. Once we, once we complete the repairs or do whatever we're going to have to do to that building, we'll get some more funds from the insurance company. Funds are already budgeted and I'll let Lori, I may have to lean on her to help me with the financial end of this. But basically, it's going to require some engineering because there's some, there's some unknowns about part of the building on what we're going to do to to finish it, repair it, or even tear it down and start again. We're we're going to do whatever's best and most economical. But basically, now all I'm asking for is the resolution exempting architectural services for Lupa Architectural, because he's the one that's been working with us on other county facilities. It's under $50,000. It lets us start the process with him. We can get into the engineering documents, figure out what the plan is for that building, bring it back to you for approval. And Lori, financially, help me out here, what I need financially on this one for anything for this.
I don't need any, I don't need a budget amendment, like, so there's already funds, funds budgeted that we can take to architect fees out of.
Okay. All right.
Do you need a motion to approve this resolution exempting the architect fees from the?
Article 3D. Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution as presented.
I hear a motion by Commissioner Breeden.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Antoine. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your right arm and stating aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? All right, five oh. All right, that's easy. Consent agenda with the additional fireworks on 426.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Breeden.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Antoine. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right arm and state aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Amy, five oh. All right. We have one appointment to the Board of Health. The application was in our packet. How does the board feel?
My recommend, uh, make a motion, Courtney Patrick, uh, the appointed, uh, fieldist, Macon County Board of Health physician.
I'll second that. I hear a motion by Commissioner Shields, uh, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any further discussion?
I will make note, just for the general public, we only had one application and this is a career-specific application for a pharmacist. So that's the reason.
Thank you.
The process is a little different.
That's a great point. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right arm and state aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? All right.
Kathy, we, we lack one more for a, um, to, if anybody wants to get their certification with you, young board.
I'm too busy.
All right, hang on. So I think we do have a closed session tonight.
Yes, we need to run under a closed session for, you think he has 143, that's 318, 211, 33.
Do we expect any action?
No.
All right, no action anticipated. Need a motion?
Motion's going. Close session.
Motion by Commissioner Sherrill, seconded by Commissioner Shields. All in favor, please raise your right arm and state aye.
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 Doctor Williams, please.
I know.
Meet you, Shelby. See you, Doc.
Come on here.
Eric, Eric, come on here.
Oh, gosh. Jesus.
All the favor raised in that arms they die.
Ah.
Ah.
Damn, S five oh, Mr. Shield was an affirmative.
Okay, I've got a...